Please bow your head. Dear God, we ask that you watch over us and keep everybody safe through all the times that we've had lately. We ask that you give us the wisdom to carry on business at our meeting this evening and provide us with the necessary help. We also ask that you watch over and guard all of our first responders, including our law enforcement, our men and women overseas, and those who cannot be with us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great truth of Jesus Christ. In the state of Texas, by the legislature's convenience, Texas was a state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Can I make a call? Mayor Chris Moore. Councilmember Mitchell Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Jerry Reason.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Barton.
Here.
Pro Tim Greg Barton. Councilmember Larry Sanders.
Here.
City Attorney Scott Francis.
Here.
City Engineer Greg Phipps.
Here.
Chief of Police Chief Carlisle.
Here.
City Secretary slash Finance Marie Campbell.
Come in.
City Administrator Scott Castle. He's here. Thank you. Just public comments. Reminder that council cannot engage in conversation on public comments. We might hold you for three minutes. So I've got one here from Diane.
It's really easy, really quick. We want to start planning the Fourth of July parade early this year, so you guys can get a grand marshal. Okay. And I need lots of volunteers. So you can find me on Facebook, you can find me here. That's it.
How quickly do you need a grand marshal?
I want to start planning the parade and stuff in May, so we're scheduled by June, the first of June. Good?
Good.
Okay. Because under last year, we wanted to put our names in the half, but I think it was too late, they didn't have time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That is the only public comment that I have for right now. So we will talk when it comes up. No, I've got one here for you. Do you want to speak now or do you want to speak before the agenda?
No, you can say.
All right. It's up to you.
I misunderstood where you had it written.
Okay. Okay, this is regarding the number seven and number fifteen on the agenda, both. I went, I think it was last week or two weeks ago with the Montgomery County prison for Commissioner, and then I heard about the development regulations that they put on Montgomery County that is low by them right now by March four, twenty twenty-five. And I know in the city of Roman Forest, we have our own will, but these new development regulations are set out for most of Montgomery County. And I would like to see if the board would study what they approved for Montgomery County, and because we are a city, we are not mandated to be regulated by them, but we belong to Montgomery County, and we have so many issues with sewer and all that kind of stuff, location funds and everything. So if we follow these regulations, they will stop for us. We'll have to not just follow their regulations, and it will be easier for the city to follow them and have their help with all the regulations they already have for everybody from Montgomery County. That's one of my first point.
What's the name of that document?
It's Montgomery County Development Regulation, and it came on March four, twenty twenty-five. You can find that on the website of the engineer. And it's mandatory for all the new developer changes and everything. It has all the information about sewer, construction, coordination, compliance, engineers, schedules, and everything that any developer needs to be successful. And we can follow them, and it's going to be easier for us and cheaper. And then another thing that I figured out, Montgomery County Prison Four have a COVID policy, the driveway COVID inspection, that is required that if we as a city don't use, we have our own, but they only charge twenty-five dollars to do the inspection for the cop before and after. So I think as a city who belongs to Montgomery County, we can start using them and lower our costs and make the city follow the regulations that Montgomery County deals. This is twenty-five dollar inspection fee would be paid for the property owner, prison for service. That's all?
Thank you. So I know I'm going slowly. If y'all can't hear what I'm saying, somebody raise your hand and give me a sign. Okay, I'll try to speak up. So, okay, so consent agenda items. Council, if you can review the minutes of the last meeting, February twentieth, twenty twenty-five special council meeting, and February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting. If you'll also take a look at the maintenance report, court report, and permanent report. I'm speaking on those. Scott, you're not going to speak on that?
Yes, sir. Just for your review.
That's it. So you go on ladies. Any questions?
I was not available. My wife and children had a different issue, so I'm not going to go through those. This is twenty twenty-two.
You can stay. You don't have to. You can stay. Let's stick around. No one ready for the financial report? All good. All right. Financial report.
For the month of September, it was business as usual, unless you have any questions.
So nothing, nothing standing, nothing unusual standing out in the report?
Nothing.
It's not like the month before we had victims, lots of bloody footprints at Texas.
Was it like starting last January?
Okay, so council, if you can look over the budget real quick. Got any questions for Lori?
Mayor, I have one. The three hundred percent used of our budget for telecommunications.
Your mic right there, closer.
I'm sorry. The only one I have is telecommunications is three hundred and seventy-six. It's five thirty percent. I'm just kind of curious about that one. I understand going over a little bit, but I'm just not curious what happened.
Page?
Page one.
On the first?
I'm reading it wrong.
Like the six line out and down? Telecommunications.
Telecommunications?
Yeah, telecommunications.
That's on the revenue that we received in.
So that's revenue, that's revenue company instead of putting in.
Right. Yeah, that's revenue.
That's always a good thing.
That is a good thing.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any other questions on the financial? All right, so moving on, city administrator report. Can you hear me? All right. So let's start with the events committee, who hosted the same Patty's Day in the Park on Saturday, March fifteenth. Came to that, there was lots of beer and beer, food, games, fellowship. It was a great time to see residents that attended, and also a lot of people, people who have lived in Roman Forest. On Sunday, March thirtieth, Hot Rods in the Park will take place. That event will start at noon and end at four o'clock. Registration opens at eleven o'clock, and the entry fee is twenty dollars if you pre-register, twenty-five dollars if you wait to register at the event. There'll be a hot dog combo available there for five dollars. Also, there'll be a kids' power bill category, and there'll also be prizes given for different categories by the events committee. April fourth through the sixth will be our next community garage sale weekend. Coffee and donuts event in April will be on April the nineteenth, starting at nine o'clock here at City Hall. And the next round of bingo is tentatively set for April the twenty-sixth. No time on that has been given. And the Gardens of Roman Forest had their first road cleanup Saturday, March twenty-second. They got their sign on Avenue Way, being recognized with Commissioner Matt Gray. Had the first one, saw a lot of bags out there today, and Katush got her pick on that up tomorrow. Anything else I missed from the community?
The bingo is definitely set for the church this time, because the legislature's here. And it starts, we want people to arrive eleven-thirty, we'll serve food at noon, and the bingo starts at twelve-thirty. And we would definitely like to have more Roman Forest residents there. Definitely. I mean, we're going to have to remember the car. So we won't turn people away this time. So yeah, so it's definitely at the gym, starting at eleven-thirty.
Any questions about anything from the events committees? Administration side, Energy has officially, as I said last month, agreed to install the underground on the boulevard, and the new easement contracts went out this week. Residents should have gotten them on Monday or Tuesday. Actually, should have got two of them. One of them, a certified mail, went by regular mail. Residents that received one can sign that, can sign the form and come up here to City Hall and meet with Marie, and she can notarize that for you. But on this coming Wednesday, the twenty-sixth of March, a representative from Energy will be here from nine o'clock to seven o'clock, should any residents have questions about paperwork or what it says, or they don't agree with the number that they're being offered, or they just have a problem with something else that's in the contract. So that representative will be here in this room, nine o'clock this Wednesday, and will be here until seven o'clock that night. The repair work on the swimming pool and splash pad was completed, and the city appreciates Everest Pools. Everest Pools is a local pool company and did a really good job for us, got on that real quick for us and got it finished before summer started. Price and hours for the pool and splash pad, pool hours, are going to be similar to what they were last year. Wednesday through Friday will be noon to seven. Saturdays will be ten a.m. to seven p.m., and Sundays will be one to seven. Pricing is the same as it was last year. Season pass for a family of four is two hundred dollars, and additional family members can be added for twenty dollars per person per family that live in that household. The individual daily rate will stay at five dollars per person for both residents and non-residents. The splash pad, we're going to open on Monday, May fifth, and it'll only be closed on Wednesdays for maintenance. And as you know, splash pad is free for everybody, but it'll be open Monday through, Monday through Sunday, closed on Wednesdays, starting on Monday, May the fifth. That'll give us three weeks before the pool actually opens, the weekend of Memorial Day weekend, when we start getting live cards and kids from school. Xfinity and Comcast began installing fiber in our city. If you have issues with, something that happens with Xfinity Comcast on your property, you can email damages@americanacc.com, or you can call me here at City Hall and I'll help report your issue for you. You know, I just want to say one thing about them coming into our city, and Tocas is now in our city, and for so long, as a Roman Forest resident, we complained that we didn't have choices. Well, now we have choices. We got a lot of choices. So I think this is good for our city. It's just a little Roman bangs on three different companies out there burrowing holes in the ground, all at the same time with Tocas, Energy, and with Comcast. So if they got, if you have something with damages, also, we put this flyer on our city Facebook page, and it has the damages@americanacc that you can also email, but I'll be more than happy to help you get in touch with the right person if you have a problem with Also, the city's been working with Commissioner Gray's office on gaining easement access for the outfalls that they've agreed to take care of for the city. The clearing of the outfalls is scheduled to begin sometime in early April, will continue through the summer, and I believe that Marie and I went to close to fifteen, twenty houses, and we have all those signed off for Commissioner Gray so they can start when they're ready. And last but not least, I am very pleased to announce tonight that the city of Roman Forest received a grant in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the East Montgomery County Improvement District to help offset the cost of pool and splash pad repairs and updates. The city appreciates Mr. McGrey and their support and willingness to come and help out the city at this time. Any questions? Thank you for doing that. Council, any questions for Mr. Councilmember?
No questions, just a comment for real for the consent approval. I don't think we've got a physical copy of the administrator's report. We did get it mailed out to us, emailed, so I've read it.
It's in the back. It's behind the.
It's in your financials.
Okay. Financial something. Yes, sir. Okay. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
You get so many paper clues, and just it's, try to combine a couple for.
Okay. Nope, it's here. No issue.
Yeah, just a comment for me. Mr. Councilmember. A great emails you put out for statuses for the residents. Those are very good. I think it keeps everybody informed of what's going on. Thank you for doing that. That's what I'm saying. If you've got neighbors that still want to get on, all they got to do is just email me and I'll be sure and get added to the list, so it is a way to get information out more efficiently than trying to put it on Facebook. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Carlisle, please report.
All right. Governor. All right. That's it. The Matrice Somis has retired after sixteen years of his zip wire service to the city of Roman Forest.
You're trailing on.
Huh?
You're trailing on. Thank you, sir.
Oh. Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. When I looked away, I guess.
Yeah.
He played a crucial role in building and professionalizing our agency, which was important when I became chief. I had the privilege of hiring him, training him, mentoring him, and I wish him the very best as future leaders. Michael Ellison did receive the East Montgomery County Outstanding Officer of the Year Award on February twenty-fourth at the East Montgomery County Police Officer Appreciation Bankery. So a congratulation to Michael for this well-deserved recognition. The replacement vehicle that we have is currently at the outfitters still. There was a minor delay. We expect to receive it shortly. Efficiently, we have received the police equipment insurance supplement, so we got the supplement and everything. We have made significant progress on our project to install the flock cameras. Thirteen out of sixteen cameras have been installed, and we are already, it's already proven to be a very helpful in our investigations. I think that's out there, I think there's now fourteen installed of the sixteen. We are currently hiring for a police officer position. The job posting is available on social media and other regular posting locations. We're fixing to start doing some recruiting, just, you know, a lot of agencies are hiring at the same time, so that's something we've got to deal with. Please note, the new non-emergency, and this is important for everybody if you have a kid, I don't have any new refrigerator magnets yet.
This would be good for Mr. Councilmember.
Yes, yes, I would do one for that. So please note, the new non-emergency police dispatch number is nine-three-six-five-three-eight-five-nine-zero-zero. And choose option two if you don't want to listen to, there's a lot of stuff talking about option one, so just hit option two. You can program it in your phone by hit the comma between the ten-digit number and put two, and that way, when it picks up, it immediately hits two for you. If you hit the star and then hit pause, it'll put that pause in there, allow it to pick up, then it'll hit number two for you, and you don't got to worry about it. You got to program it to your smartphone.
Can I have the number again, please?
It is nine-three-six-five-three-eight-five-nine-zero-zero. There has been mistakes because the old number was seven-six-zero-fifty-eight-hundred. That is still a good number, but it's not seven-six-zero in the middle. Even our police officers are making that mistake when they're crossing out the number on the business card. We need to get it in our head, it's not seven-six-zero anymore, it's nine-three-six-five-three-eight-five-nine-zero-zero, option two. The original number is now the sheriff department's information number, but option eight will still get you to non-emergency dispatch. But you got to listen to all that stuff about what it is to get to option eight. So anyway, I'm going to print up some stuff. Those refrigerator magnets that I put out, they were pretty expensive, and that was a perfect way to get our dispatch number out there, but now it's different, so I need to redo that. So I got to find a method where I can fix it, work on that, but none of that takes, I mean, all that takes time to get together, so it's going to be a couple of months by the time. They just pushed this out on me like three days before implementing it, so. The reason is it aims to improve the dispatch call center efficiency. So that was one of the campaign promises of West Bendu Little. I did it, he was right, but we got to go through this little pain in the change. Roman Forest honorary police officer DJ Daniel was recently made an honorary Secret Service agent. I'll leave the politics out, so I'm not naming any names. DJ has become quite a celebrity since then. He was sworn in as a police officer by Chief Steven Carlisle at our Roman Forest Police Officers Awards and Recognition Dinner on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. DJ has surpassed his survival expectations despite his terminal break and spinal cancer diagnosis. So he's doing awesome, and we were agency number one thirteen. He's now at over nine hundred. So he's doing good, looks right here in humble. I've talked to his dad just the other day. Somebody sent him a gift, and he's got to come back to get it. The state has strike the US fifty-nine theater at Roman Forest Boulevard for a double turn lane. This achievement was made possible through the efforts of Mayor Chris Moore and Commissioner Matt Gray, who worked diligently to convince Tech dot to implement this change.
It's really, it's really helped. That's a good thing.
Yes, it's helped, and I am really surprised that there, to my knowledge, there's no fender benders.
Somebody did take out the sign of a doctor road.
Right. This weekend. Yeah, that was awesome over here. I seen a whole bunch of trash bags, but on the way, when I passed those trash bags, I went down there Sunday, and I seen a McDonald's bag, and then a cup over here, and another piece of, it just, for some reason, I think somebody thought it was funny just to do that right after those bags, so terrible.
Maybe instead of the flock cameras, you put up a game camera.
Exactly. Yeah. All right, many homes were damaged by Hurricane Barrel. Our code enforcement is typically very understanding for about six months following the storm regarding the homes with unrepaired damage. It's been over six months, it's been seven, seven and a half months. Recently, our code enforcement has been contacting homeowners who have not completed or started the repairs, offering our assistance. Over time, our approach will shift from offering help to enforcement. As, as is our standard process, we usually encounter minimal issues with this transition. So I got an update today. We found that there are some eyesores right now. Every one of them have been contacted. Some of them have unique issues. We're still in the what can we do to help mode, but eventually, as we talk to them, we get a little bit more spurred, but we're still trying to help. So y'all have any questions? Clarification?
Just on that last section, again, the compassionate first and then the enforcement. What is our actual policy on that? So I know you give them six months, and then you kind of reach out and see what we can do, but if somebody has a blue-tarred house that's been vacant since Hurricane Barrel, and they're making no effort to repair it, whether they received insurance funds or they're fighting with their insurance company, what is our city's policy and at what point can we step in and say that we require it to be fixed? You can't leave it and abandon your house and take the insurance process.
Alright, the policy is, there's not a policy that says exactly what to do under that circumstance. If it's a violation, we have the authority to issue a notification and then follow-up after a reasonable time to fix it, follow-up with a, with a, with enforcement. Sometimes we get extensions, sometimes we go straight to the enforcement, depends on the situation. And we have what they call situational discretion, and since I am in charge of code enforcement, we have a code enforcement officer, I'm in charge of code enforcement. I'm very compassionate, I'm also very listening to what council's wishes are, and I try to, try to act the best way to represent the council and to represent the situation. And in this case, there are a couple ones that fit what you're talking about. There, I don't want to get into people's personal business in a public meeting, but there are some unique scenarios. One that actually talked to you about, there's a very unique scenario for that one, and we're gonna...
Well, I'm sure they're gonna be all over the world. What originally brought this up in our discussion is Mayor Proton, I don't remember when it was, but more than a year ago, because Larry Forster was still our attorney at the time, we had talked about an ordinance for abandoning or derailing or unsafe structures, and I don't recall how we left that, if we ever did anything with it, or we drafted something and then we kind of put it on the back burner to go back and look at it again. But at some point, right, building is unsecured or unsafe and it's abandoned, one, we have the obligation to notify the mortgage company as well as the homeowner, right, so that they know that their property is, is abandoned.
There are some state rules that we have to follow on that, but an ordinance does help. I remember it was, there was a push on, it had an ordinance to go with it, and the best I can remember is it was tabled and it didn't go any further. I would suggest that we keep going with that, that way it gives us that better ammunition. But there is state law, but a city ordinance is more powerful.
Yeah, the intent is not to be an HOA and pick shingle colors or gutter type or things like that, but if something is truly abandoned and it becomes a hazard to the rest of the community, I think that we need to have something as enforcement mechanism.
We do need something in place, but sometimes that could happen. Several trees fall on a house and it goes unrepared. It's a danger for our kids, it's a danger for anybody who might be homeless and breaking there to stay. It's dangerous, and we need something in place. I don't know why it was tabled, and I don't know why it was never put back on the agenda.
I don't, I don't recall. Just remember, we talked about it at one time and we were gonna go back and do some more review, and I think it just never got picked up again.
Right. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Any other questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief. Okay, Counsel, we just need a, we need a motion in a second to approve the consent that's in the items.
Mayor Proton, I'll make the motion to approve the consent items for the meeting, the February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five special city council meeting, February twenty-four, twenty-five regular city council meeting, maintenance report, court report, permit report, financial report, city administrative report, and police report as presented.
Motion for Councilman Davis to approve the consent agenda items as presented. I have a second. Counselman Davis, oh, sorry, Counselor Sanders, seconds. All in favor?
Since we're in the tent, I'm going to have to abstain from both city council meetings because I was...
Just abstain from, from the vote total. So, okay, so all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Make sure you're working with abstent. Thank you. Alright, moving on, item number seven, discuss and consider the status of the following projects, taking action in conjunction with engineer Green Phipps. Drainage improvements, road improvements, development improvements. Mr. Phipps?
I do not have a formal report, but just an update. Drainage, Mr. Councilman has, has had a couple of locations cleaned and telebotted on some of the closed culvert systems. That's being evaluated to see what those, I'll give you a copy of that tonight, so I'll get it tomorrow, and we'll, we'll let the board report on that. Road improvements, Chief Carlyle, as he is very good doing, had five FEMA personnel out here and walked the city and looked at all of the damage for claims. And there's a couple of pages of those and two days of walking asphalt. So there's a pretty good list that they are looking at to see what, what they can offer us as a city for paid repairs and for damage in some of the flood events. I think there were two events that were being looked, three events that were being looked at, so.
No, no, you're right, Chief.
Do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Possibly, no guarantee. There might be a little bit of a mitigation that we can apply for to help with some drainage issues. Not guaranteed, so I don't want to mention it in a public meeting, everybody's hopes up, but there's, there's a little stretch that I have a mitigation idea, they're looking at it, and it might help. And it's one of your priority positions.
Okay, it's good news.
And then last, I did finish the Hubbard Park survey. We did a boundary survey on it, were steady, I think of the seven corners, we hit the set six of them, reset six of them and did the total one. So I'll give that, copy of that PDF over to Mr. Councilman, and we can just go from there, and I can bring twenty-four hundred six copies at the next council for our meeting. Wish to have a copy of that.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Phipps.
And that's all I have. Any questions?
So just a comment on, on drainage. Mr. Councilman, when they hit the, or expedited, or the podcast hit the water line in the corner Caesar Circle and Venus, I noticed the cover that's right there, it's about half full of sand now, so we'll need to address that. They'll need to clean that up.
And that's the fun part of drillers. You get to come back after and figure out what they, what they've damaged. It's not uncommon.
We're, we're still missing a bunch of lights down the boulevard because of tech is.
Yeah, so it's, it'll be ongoing for a while.
Okay. I have a question. Any questions?
When do you expect that report from FEMA to respond?
Today, I don't... I signed the paperwork today for the, for the, what he just talked about, side inspections.
Okay.
We got till November to complete the work.
Okay.
So we're already down to earth.
And what, what are we looking at?
I can look down when we have some changes.
What are we looking at in the report? What, tell us.
I'd rather not talk about it in a public discussion.
Okay.
I don't want to get anybody out here's hopes up on a meeting.
Okay.
I think they can respect that. You say one thing here, then it's all over Facebook as a fact.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Sergeant. Alright, moving on, item number eight, discuss and consider possible action concern variance approval for fencing located at thirty-two oh-two Roman Force Boulevard by Fuel Max. So this, this is a request from Chief Carlyle to consider a possible variance for a dumpster gate.
No, this is these demising...
This is a variance, yes, the Phipps. My apologies, my apologies, I jumped again. So, okay, so who's, you ready? Jumped ahead a little bit, fourteen there. Trying to prove the legal quickness. People's ears perked up almost as if they'd heard the words Hubbard Park. So what we have before you is Mr. Momen, who is the owner of the Fuel Max at the end of the Boulevard, Galaxy. When they were building the Fuel Max, they put in a fence that runs from the back of their property all the way to the front. If you've gone that way, you'll see it. They did not have a permit approved before they put the fence up, and then once they put it up, realized that they couldn't go that far all the way to the road. So what they're asking for is for a variance to allow them to put the fence where it is now and leave it as is. I will say that the neighbors next door, that own the property next door to them, have asked that that fence also stayed the way it is right now so that all the business and everything going on at Fuel Max doesn't come onto their property. So included in the packet that you have in front of you, you have his application they put, and then the fee they paid, and then there's a plot, and then there's pictures that code enforcement took and then went out to, to help him with the variance to get. So I don't know if he's here tonight, I don't see him at State Command, but that's what we're asking for, is for the variance of this fence to be able to extend past the building line. Yes, sir.
So I guess my only thought of having it looked at, right, it's into the utility easement, so maybe just have him sign some letter of acknowledgement that if any of the utilities require it to be removed, then it's to be removed at his expense. I mean, I don't think we as the city, or I personally don't have an issue with it going as far as it goes, it's not in the ditch, but it is in the utility easement to look at it.
Okay.
So as long as they don't care, I don't care, but if for some reason they need to gain access...
I don't want to step on Chief's toes there. Chief Carlyle.
Is this where the fence is at?
Are you good? Yeah, I just want to say there's no traffic hazard. I'm okay with it. I really want y'all to approve it too, because I don't think, I don't think the resident that's living there should have to look at the business.
Yeah, and again, just as long as they take responsibility if it has to come down because of the utilities, it's his cost, not ours for pretty...
I have a question about the, we have an ordinance that produced people dumping into dumpsters throughout the city, city dumpsters. We have a maintenance, dumping trash. They say we have an ordinance that people from dumping trash into city dumpsters. Does that ordinance also contain the people dumping trash into dumpsters out of the filming station?
Well, yeah, so we'll need to discuss that separately. I was saying, we're coming up with a whole ordinance on enclosures and dumpsters here in just a few minutes that might cover some of that, but as far as, and Chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but the dumpster that's at the Fuel Max, if he had a problem with people dumping in his dumpster, then he would be able to file a report with our police department. It would be anything that we would cover during the ordinance. Counsel, any other discussion on this?
I have a question. The fence, I probably don't have much to follow with, but there's one thing I've heard, I don't know if it's true, but he's supposed to put some type of vegetation between tree, between station and the house.
He did put grassy out of the twang there. He did saw that.
How many trees that grow, block?
I didn't hear that.
He can't put trees where that, where those field lines are.
Well, I think that's probably his problem, not trying to block up the neighbor out there. Now, I wouldn't want to live there and have all the light, kind of my house.
Right, but I don't think that was written into anything when he signed on to do that that it was gonna be completely in that lot. Counsel, any other discussion, questions on this topic? Okay, so where do we, where do we want to go? Do we want a motion? Councilman Davis?
I'll make the motion that we approve the variance with the condition that the property owner acknowledged that if the fence is required to be removed due to being in the utility easement, then it would be done so at their expense.
Motion on the floor, Councilman Davis, to approve the variance with the exception of responsibility for the utility easement. Do we have a second?
Please take it.
Counselor Sanders, seconds. All in favor? All opposed? And Mr. Sanders? Stand up for the next one? No, I was just making sure it was all ready for the representative to audit. Give that next. Yeah. Alright, so item nine, discuss and consider possible action concerning accepting the terms of the twenty-twenty-three annual budget of the city's financial records and the preparation of the financial statements for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three by Brooks Watson Company, P L L C, certified public account.
My name is Wes Farm, Audit Manager at Brooks Watson. I'm here today to present the city's audit financial sophisticated twenty-twenty-three. First, I'd like to go over a quick overview for the audit process. The audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We start off with our planning phase, where we focus, we have a risk-based approach focusing on areas that are most susceptible to fraud or error. After the planning stage, we move into fieldwork, where we agree allowances to the underlying reports, perform testing to assure that those balances are materially accurate. After fieldwork and planning are completed, we then move on to concluding reporting. We evaluate the results from fieldwork and planning, we prepare the report and required communications. The audit report in front of you, the balance copy here, it's made up of several different main components, the first being the auditor's opinion, which then we'll move into the management discussion analysis of all the financial numbers and figures, then into the basic financial statements and required supplementary information. First, I'd like to get into the auditor's opinion. There's four possible outcomes for our opinion, the best being unmodified, worst being adverse. The city receiving unmodified opinion, that's the highest level of assurance that we can give, that these financials are free from material error or misstatements. Next, we'll move into some of the financial highlights. If you want to flip to the actual reports on page seven, twenty-two, and twenty-six, and what we're going over here. Total assets of the city exceed liabilities by three-point-eight million. The city had an overall increase in net position of one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand. City governmental fund reported a combined ending fund balance of eight-hundred-seven-thousand, which was an increase of seventy-eight-thousand from twenty-twenty-two. At the end of the year, though, the unsigned fund balance in the general fund was five-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, which is twenty-nine percent of the total operating expenditures. The GFOA recommends two months, that makes up, those figures there make up three months, so the city's in a good position there for operating costs for the vehicles. Here's a breakdown of the governmental activities revenues. The bulk, the main factor there is the fifty-four percent of property taxes out of a total of two-point-two-million in the city revenues. The property tax is made up fifty-four percent of those revenues, followed by charges for services making up sixteen percent or three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, and then grants and contributions were about three percent at sixty-thousand a year. For the city's expenses, the total governmental expenses were two-million. Prior year is two-point-one-million. The largest of those expenses were made up from the police department at thirty-seven percent, seven-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand, the increase from a prior year of six-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand. General government made up twenty-four percent of the expenditures, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand. Prior year was five-hundred-and-fifty-one. Public Works is next, it made up twenty-eight percent of the total expenditures, or five-hundred-and-sevent-five-thousand. Public Works was next, it made up twenty-eight percent of the total expenditures, or five hundred and seventy-five thousand. In the prior year, it was six hundred and seventy-six. Interest and fiscal charges were four percent of what was paid, that's a ninety-two thousand per year. You'll see this in the financials as well. Overall, the general fund had the most variance there. Total revenue exceeded total expenditures by seventy thousand, which is what increased the net position for the general fund. The debt service account of projects, fund and call there as well. In comparison of the final budget to the actual financial numbers, total revenues and total expenditures came in under what was expected for the year, which created a hundred and thirty-two thousand variance total from net position, the city had planned for sixty-one thousand of its reserves to be used up, and instead it got a hundred and thirty-two increase there. The main reason for that right there is the, a lot of the grant funds weren't spent during the year that were budgeted for, I believe it was mainly the ARCA funds. And also in front of you, there should be two other packets along with the financials, and one of them is a letter including the general entries that we proposed for the audit. The other has some recommendations. I'd like to have another question. Yes, sir.
So I guess first, just to express a concern, this is the 2023 audit. So this is a year and six months after those books closed. So how do we improve that so that 2024 audit, when are we expecting that and what should we expect?
Okay, the reason why it's been so late this year is there's a lot of turnover at the city between the city manager and the personnel who's charged the books. Originally, we had sent a request to them, then they ended up turning over. And then, once when we started getting stuff for the 2023 audit, then it's our busy season. That's where we got audits slated from November all the way through March. I'll talk with John about scheduling for 2024. I'm sure he has a plan for that.
So we don't have that even started yet, and we're
Hard to talk to John.
Four months into, five months into the next budget?
We had to close out 23 before we could even start the 24 one, so we had to get this approval tonight before we could actually start the other. Documents have gone back and forth, but it's not officially started yet until we can close out the 23 books.
So how long should the audit take? What is a reasonable amount of time? And at what point can we request somebody come to this location rather than documents going back and forth? That somebody be resident to pull those documents themselves, or to walk into somebody's office to ask for them? We've now created a 2025 budget and approved it, not even knowing if the 2023 was valid or the 2024. We haven't even looked at, which I understand there's a lapse in there, you know, that we have to approve the 25 before the 24 is audited. But certainly the 23 should have been audited before we did the 25 budget, because there were some discrepancies you found. Even though we got unmodified, some of them had a rather significant variance in at least what was presented. I don't know if it was actually an error in the accounts themselves, but as they were presented, were all significant.
And the budget's actual, is what you're speaking about, yeah?
Correct.
Yeah.
So what is a reasonable amount of time to expect the 2024 budget to be audited?
John didn't have the answer for me on asking that.
Yeah, we're just going to get work with us, John.
I mean, just a gut check, one month, six months? What is, what in the world?
Terminally speaking, getting fieldwork done for this city, and then getting it reviewed, because that's the department. It generally takes maybe about a month to get the whole audit done.
And we did ask John, while we didn't have someone come into the city to do ours, as compared to sending documents the other way.
So again, probably for my frustration, if it normally takes about a month, we didn't have a turnover in the city until eight months after the budget ended for 2023?
This is on your people that were here before.
That's what I'm saying, if it normally takes a month, so it went on for at least six to eight months before we had the turnover, and then it went on for another six months after that.
Yes, sir, I don't have an answer for what happened.
I would just like to express my displeasure with it not being brought up to council at some point, whether it's through the auditing company or through the administrators, that it's not being done in a timely manner. And if it's a problem with the auditing company, we need to look at that. And if it's a problem with our processes, then council needs to be made aware of it, so that we know it's not.
I don't want to back you up, but back when I got hired in October, within the first three weeks, I notified that the 22 had been done, there was no 23. And I notified the mayor, I thought I notified everybody, and that we were a year and a half behind. So that, we did catch that when we first got here, when Marie and I came in, in early October. But as far as catching up, you know, it was a matter of playing a lot of catch-up from two, a year and a half, like you say.
So if we don't have the 24 audited by June, then we need to start raising flags. That you're saying one month, and if we give it three months, then we certainly have a problem if it's not done by the end of June.
I think it's what, yeah, what they feel like they, how long they feel like it will take. We can get the documents as quick as they ask for them. It's just a matter of how fast they have someone that can keep up with that pace and try to catch us up, because they know we're behind by a year.
Understood.
I guess my question on this, this budget really means nothing from 2023 now, we're at 2025. All we're doing is catching up, approving something that doesn't mean anything?
By the way, you have to go through.
Don't say it doesn't mean anything. What it means is, this is transparency, it shows that the city is
I understand.
Managing its budget, money's going where it's supposed to go, there's no money disappearing or what. So don't, don't say it doesn't mean anything, because it does mean something.
I understand what you're saying, but being almost two years behind.
That was, that was a product of the changes that the city's gone through over the last year and a half, right? But doesn't change the, doesn't change the fact that we, we as council need this unmodified rating? So that we can sleep at night knowing the books are being done properly.
Then my last question is that this report, once it's accepted by council, will be put on the website so anybody has access to it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any other questions.
Any other, you know, so do we, I see you've got some recommendations here. Do we need to go over those, or is that just something we just go over?
I would go over those in public.
Okay.
But if you have any questions on any of those, then feel free to contact us.
Okay. Okay, all right, counsel, any other questions and discussion? So we will need to approve this audit. So we will need a motion, a second.
Still married to him? With your permission, I would like to make a motion that we approve the audit of Roman Forest for the year 2023.
Motion on the floor, Counsel, Counsel, Counselor Reesner, to approve the 2023 annual audit of the city's financial records as presented. Do I have a second? Counselor Davis, second. Called in favor? It's unanimous.
I don't know if I need to wait for the final item on the agenda, but I would like to request a follow-up. So in the next council meeting, whether we give a special session or separately, just kind of follow-up from your recommendations from the auditing firm, what we have done, and what we might need to do differently moving forward. And whether we want to do that in an open session or a closed session, however, is best.
I like it.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much, Mr.
Yep, thank you so much. All right, moving on, item number ten, discuss and approve an agreement with Entergy. Offer to acquire a 10-foot easement of property owned by the city of Roman Forest, property address is Roman Forest, Civic One, Block Five, located in the city. Mr. Counsel, agree?
Yes, sir. So as we spoke of earlier, the Entergy agreement that came out, I put into your packet with the letter that came in with the contract that should be in the packet. And what I'm asking you now is for us to to approve that, that we'll go ahead and sign off on our piece of property, which is located in the front of Roman Forest. Ours is basically runs from the Alur real estate building back towards the creek, where that property, and that's what they're offering us, to buy that 10-foot easement coming across to start the whole process of what they're going to want to do down the right side of the boulevard and go back across to the left side.
What is the overall intent? So the lines that they're putting in underground, are they adding a new substation, or is it just a pass-through? Or what is the final goal of what they're doing?
It's the Allo substation that's in the back, um, Galaxy. They're adding more, they're basically making it so that if power goes out in Roman Forest, when they put this in there, you'll have maybe ten houses that go out, fifteen houses that go out, rather than being a whole side of Roman Forest.
Okay.
It's supposed to help with the energy of Roman Forest.
Do you know if that's, is it going to also have that same effect on Woodway?
I would say so. Anything that comes through, that comes this way off of that substation, I would say yes to that, but that is a indicated failure.
Hey, counsel, so any questions on this agreement with Entergy?
I'll make a motion.
Sure.
Make a motion that we approve the agreement with the Entergy of that 10-foot detail to easement for our property.
Motion on the floor from Counsel and Sanders to approve the agreement with Entergy as written. Second. Counselor Ellis, called in favor? It's unanimous. Moving on, item 11, discuss and approve an agreement between the city of Roman Forest and Civic Plus.
So what this is, is Civic Plus is part of Unicode, which is part of our ordinances that get posted online. They sent Marie and I a contract and asked us if we would like to be, instead of being a pay-by-the-page city, that we can sign a contract with them and pay nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for a year starting on April the first. That would run through April first of 26. So I went back and I pulled the numbers of the last four years just to see if this was even worth looking at. And in 21, we spent sixteen hundred and eighty dollars, in 22, we spent zero dollars, 23 was eighteen hundred and fifty-two dollars, and 24 was eighteen hundred dollars. We've got things that we're going to approve tonight, we've got other ones that are going to be asked for, ordinance changes or updates over the next couple of months that I just feel that when you're talking about twenty-four dollars and seventy cents a page rather than a flat rate, I think this is a better deal for us. And before we sign, I want that, Mr. Francis, make sure he looks it over, but it just seems like it was a way to save some money for the city.
Hey, counsel, questions or concerns about this proposal? I think it makes sense, safest, safest money.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion, the city agrees with the agreement with Civic Plus starting April first? Or not, Civic Plus?
Motion on the floor from Counselor Ellis to approve an agreement between the city of Roman Forest and Civic Plus for a contract for nine hundred and seventy-five dollars starting April the first of 2025. For one year. Do I have a second? Counselor Sanders, seconds. Called in favor? Counselor Sanders? It's unanimous.
You lose second to object.
No, I didn't object, I'm listening. Moving on, item number 12, discuss and approve making the corner of Roman Forest Boulevard and Tram Galaxy into a four-way stop.
Hell, yes.
Yes, sir, that motion.
Absolutely, I would like to make the motion to approve making the intersection of Roman Forest Boulevard and Tram slash Galaxy a four-way stop, with please adding the designation "always stop," that every stop sign, so people know it's changed.
We'll push that out tomorrow on the city Facebook, Facebook, also sending out the city-wide email that we sent out. And I talked to Larry today, that it was approved, that we have the materials. He said we'd have to still order the four-way stop sign, so it should be up as soon as the materials can get here.
So we have a motion on the floor from Counselor Davis to approve putting a four-way stop at the corner of Roman Forest Boulevard, Tram and Galaxy. Any further discussion, counsel? Any further discussion, Mr. Justice Barrett?
No, sir, I was just going to compare it to the, uh, at the Galaxy area as a four-way stop. And with the Fuelmax, this has created a lot of traffic there. And with your permission, I might, I would like to ask for maybe a traffic signal at that intersection to make the, that turn to a stop line one day. I think there's that much traffic coming that way now.
That's something maybe County can assist us with?
I know, I, I would think this is him, uh, I was talking about, Ray mentioned that we should have advanced warning signs on Roman Forest Boulevard. What words are y'all talking about?
Like a blinking light on the stop sign?
Blinking light, that'd be okay, but that wouldn't be in favor of a traffic signal where you have to wait three minutes for it to change and nobody else is coming in any direction.
Yeah, traffic signal's going to require a traffic study, a traffic study, and
But a blinking light, I would say.
But you'll, I think you're going to need to put a stop sign ahead, two hundred feet, five hundred feet, whatever it is, to, to cover. Because you're used to stopping.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, now, a discussion place to station a police officer for the first six months.
All right, so do I have a second for the, for the motion? Counselor Reesner, seconds. Called in favor? It's unanimous.
So just so you know, those warning signs, I can only put those on Roman Forest Boulevard, the ones on Galaxy and
Tram.
Tram are county roads.
They've been a stop sign, so I don't think.
Right, there's a, that was pointed out to me real quick, when this came up with county, that, uh, article that changed it fully, so they're okay.
The issue I've seen there is people on Tram and Galaxy assume that Roman Forest is going to stop, and they pull out, and they don't realize that it's not a four-way stop.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, moving on, item 13, discuss and approve the proposed update to Article Three drainage ditches and other drainage areas. The addition to the ordinance will ensure that all drainage ditches will be sized. We're going to have to make a change. Counselor, this, it says five-year rain plan, we're going to have to change it to ten. But the addition of the ordinance will ensure that all rain, drainage ditches will be sized for a ten-year rain plan in accordance with the county drainage requirements.
I thought the county had five years, what we discussed.
They updated, they updated, and this is my fault, they updated in their requirements in 21 to where roadside ditches had, on major thoroughfares, they're twenty-five year, on all other streets, they're ten year. And then outfalls for roadside ditches and close cullards to
And then outfalls for roadside ditches and close culvert to this twenty-five year.
Do we have any idea how that would impact our ditch size for the ten-year rainfall event compared to what they are now? Would they be, I mean, how deep would that estimate it?
Uh, if, I can't answer it, it's all dependent upon drainage areas.
Can we pick a couple, before we approve this, can we pick a couple of cross-sections just to understand what we're signing into laws? Because if, just as a, for instance, on Roman Forest, back where the new phase two of the, what are they called, the estates, right? What will that make the size of those ditches compared to what they are now? Right, if that makes them, say, six feet deep, then we're creating quite a hazard for the people that are walking on the side of the street or, you know, if somebody's got a six-foot ditch in their front yard, how do they know that to maintain that? I know that's sung and over in section three and four, have very steep ditches right now and they're very hard to mount. So I just like to be aware of what we're doing before we, I think the, in principle, it's a very good idea, right, to, to help the runoff, but I just wanna understand what it's actually going to impose on both the developers and the city residents after they acquire property.
So today, we don't have a standard.
Correct.
Um, so if you look at your, if you look at your packet, it should be highlighted in yellow, so what I did, I copied this purpose directly, without changing, copied it directly from the Montgomery County subdivision rules and regulations. So this is their, this is the Montgomery County's um standard, which we said we wanted to meet. This comes from that, from that workshop.
I'm just saying it's unintended consequences, so would we make it wider and not deeper at some point, or how would we achieve that to make it not unsafe? Right, again, going back how many ever years ago, we had a resident come in and complain quite a bit of how unsafe it was to school kids walking next to a really steep ditch over Al Constance, I believe, or Michelangelo did. And I just, again, I just don't want unintended consequences in making something really steep. If we make it broader and not as steep, then that makes sense.
So the, further in, in the criteria talks about roadside ditch sizes. Um, roadside ditches requirements, I believe, are eighteen inches deep to four feet deep maximum.
Okay.
And then the front slope is a maximum of three to one, and then the back slope on the property side is a, is a maximum of two to one.
Okay.
And then whatever the sizes are, is, is, just make the, the size, that's the, the width, that's the increase.
I have a question here. Do we have a four-foot deep ditch and a twenty-four inch culvert? Should we start making our culverts? I know we have to go brutally culvert, yeah. But if we're only going with twenty-four inch, should we lump that to thirty or thirty-six inch?
So be.
Two to twenty-four, for what?
Yeah, the criteria is that the culverts are sized to the capacity of the ditch. Whatever, if that, if it's calculated, that it's running fifteen CFS cubic feet per cent in that ditch. A twenty-four inch will handle about nine and a half. So it would have to be a thirty or a thirty-six inch, so it would be, yeah, there would be a driveway study in that section. And this is primarily new subdivisions, uh, going in. There would be a, a culvert study down through each driveway as to determine, on the upper end of the watershed, your minimum is twenty-four now, I believe. And as it goes down, and if the ditch gets larger, your drainage areas increase, your culvert size will increase.
So it exists to the ditches, build next on the grandfather cause, we don't have any changes to that, just all future ditches?
Yeah, so inside, generally where it's, where it's, and Council, I guess, does make that decision, inside where you're at, you know, two, one and two and some of four, you can't really go back and, and make those changes. New subdivisions, um, you know, you have that option of grandfather and then to go to that culvert.
Greg, when you said it was three to one and two to one, is that three feet in elevation per one foot in width or one foot in elevation per every three foot in width?
Three feet of width, one foot of drop.
Okay. And then on the residential side, it's two foot of width to one foot.
Yeah. Okay. If I may ask, is there anything stating how far the ditch will start out from the street? Because I've got about four inches of that from my, from the street down to the bottom of the ditch, and I know that because I fell in that son of a gun. It's uh, we've got a lot of leaves and poison ivy in there and that's not a nice thing to have happen. Is this something we need to put in an ordinance? Do we need to study this? Because if you have the ditch starting immediately at the end and you get the same things we have on Roman Forest Boulevard, where the road is gonna cave away after a while and fall in the ditch.
So generally, you've got, for memory, I think you've got a two-foot shoulder before you go to your slope. And that's, that's built, when you do, when a road's built, you've got your subgrade, your stabilized subgrade, one foot inside of that, each side you have your base material, and then one foot inside of that, you have your top cover. And so out at two feet is generally where you'll, a minimum before you'll, you'll start your, your front slopes. You have a lot of that, this right here, your, your, the edge of your pavement is the edge of your ditch.
Just words you wrote it off.
Yeah. Just, just so we understand this, this change, I mean, we did a lot of discussion about ditches and drainage. What, what came out of workshop is that we said we, we did not have a standard and we needed to proclaim the same standard as the county. So that's what this ordinance modification, that's all it's trying to address. So we really just need to decide, do we wanna match the county or do we not wanna have a standard at all, which then we have no, um, we have no voice. When, when, you know, if somebody comes in and starts building, we can't tell them how it's gotta be designed. Because ultimately, this, this designation sets the design standard for the change, for the, for the drainage, for that area, right, so.
I think we need to go with the county standard, because if we don't have anything, like you said, somebody might have a six-inch deep and that person might have a four-foot ditch. So I think we need to build with a standard twenty-five year, the county puts, and a ten-year.
And when it, when it comes down to, it's kind of that middle section there where it says collector streets, minor streets, loopholes, culvert sides, and ten-year frequency for open ditch drainage, that's, that's kind of what most of our city falls under, is that correct?
Correct. So with that, is there anything in here, I didn't see it, of the maximum depth of the ditch? You said the county is generally four foot?
Yeah, there's, there's criteria, there's design criteria for ditches, so.
That's with the county or where would we? It's stacked in our ordinance so that we're trying to, again, match what they're doing so that a homeowner doesn't get.
I think this, probably the simplest way, correct me if I'm wrong, the simplest way would be that the city adopts the county criteria for drainage, um, for drainage systems on roadways, and that covers any and everything. And if those change, you can write it to where you meet the criteria of what's current or you can add a statement, something that, that says as, as revised or as amended or however you want it to go with that. But that covers, then it covers every part of, of the ditch time.
Well, I'm in agreement that we need to match what the county's doing. I just think that we ought to also have the construction standards, that way the developers know what they're expecting and we're also not putting a homeowner in a situation where they've got a ditch that's so steep to meet the ten-year requirement that fits within the, the confines of what's, the space available from right away, but something that's not controllable.
Councilman Ellis, you got an opinion?
I just follow the county's.
Yeah. Councilman Reasoner?
Yes, I agree.
So, so would we rather see, rather than writing in a, like this specific, that we adopt a sec, separate ordinance, um, in a future meeting that would address adopting the county's subdivision rules and regulations document? Is that what we'd rather see? Or rather than just take up, taking your piece of that and putting it into our ordinance?
Can I make a motion to table this at later date?
Can, but let's, what do you guys want to see?
Sorry.
I'm trying to.
Is, did you make a motion to table?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, yes.
Motion on table, Councilman Sanders to table this, uh, this item? Any other discussion?
Further discussion, I guess, to me, there's uh two options here. We can accept this the way it is as a first step and then at a later date, accept the county's ordinance or design criteria, either supplemental to this or in lieu of it. But uh, I would rather not walk away from it yet, I'd rather do something this evening to put it in motion that we're gonna take another step on this, whether we're accepting the county's at the next meeting. I just don't want this to go on for a protracted period of time, especially with the developer already working in the phase two there, that they need to know what they're building to. And that we need to know as they pull permits, what our criteria is, because currently we haven't known.
I, I don't know, I'm not saying, delay it three months, six months, some sense of next month before, so we can find some more information.
But what are we gonna do next month, rather than just tabling it? I think we need to have something that we're going to present next month to, to vote on. If we're gonna say that we're, next month, we're going to accept the county's ordinance as written, then that's fine. But I don't want it to be just another topic of discussion next month and then nothing gets done on it for another month.
I understand that too.
As you know, wherever we did that, we're permitting for a year and a half.
No, I know we need to give this resolved over here, but the, some diagrams or some other, as Greg said, you can furnish some diagrams on what, size of dishes, which we would put in the ordinance, that you have to have these floats and everything, it just, it's that burden.
Well, we just accept the county's, they've already got that design criteria.
The, the ordinance would literally, essentially, you can, it would be a provision of the ordinance that states that the city accepts the county standards and provisions, uh, as, as revised, as, as updated.
I'll pull my motion, uh, going, that's what we bug on, the twenty-five year, like you said, will we do that?
Councilman Sanders, strikes his motion?
At the risk of complicating things, I'd like to make the motion that we accept it the way it is tonight and then next month, if we can have the county's ordinance presented to us for adoption in lieu of our ordinance.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Davis to accept the updates to the Article Three Drainage Ditches and Other Drainage Areas, um, as written, with asterisk of, let's look at adding the county document as an ordinance, I'm second. Councilman Ellis, second, all in favor? Short of the math, unanimous. Page two, number fourteen, discuss and approve the proposed update on Article Five Fences, Section Eight dash one-one-two-K, general fence requirements. The update will allow exception for dumpster closures. All right, so this is the one I just jumped the gun on earlier, so Chief, do you wanna start us off on that?
Well, I don't have that, I mean, I don't know the one.
Well, just, just, just an overview.
Oh, you mentioned it earlier.
Yeah, just an overview, I.
Yeah, you gave it.
I can speak to the update that I put in it today.
Well, I read it earlier, I like what it reads, but you are a little specific in the bulk of it.
That, that's kind of what came out of last council meeting, is that we wanted to be very specific about.
You even said the color.
Exactly, well.
I would suggest maybe a earth tone color.
You know, my thought, when I, when I looked at the Fuel Max, um, gate, it is, it is brown, and I thought, you know, that almost looks like a wood fence. That was my thought, I was like, you know what, I don't want it silver and I don't want it green, so some sort of a brown color was just my thought.
That's the only thing I know, the, the, the whole purpose of it is, that's a better build than that wood fence across the street, uh, with, you know, things that we allow. That is a much better, much durable product, so.
So I guess my comment, I went by, and I looked at the Fuel Max, I looked at the Dollar General that's becoming a clinic, I looked at, or the Dollar Tree that's becoming a clinic, the Dollar General. So the Dollar General has a chain link with slats, or one of them does, one of them's got a wood fence, uh, the residential properties that are multifamily, fourplexes or sixplexes, whatever they are, some of them have wood, some of them have corrugated metal, and I know that came up a year or more ago, they asked for a variance and we denied it and they never changed it. So I guess my request is if we're going to consider this, that there needs to be a minimum gauge thickness of the metal. It can't just be thirty gauge metal that you get at Home Depot. It needs to be a heavier gauge, twenty-two gauge roofing sheet metal, something.
Did you look at the one right here at the clinic?
Again, there's, everyone's a little bit different.
Some of the junkyard tents.
Yeah, right, that, to me, does not meet the standard, and the same thing on one of residential properties does not meet what I would think our minimum standard should be. The Fuel Max is almost a structural steel, and that's, that's a much heavier gauge metal at the Fuel Max, and that's a very durable steel. So.
Now, is it steel or is it aluminum?
I, I couldn't tell you. But again, that was the other, you'll put a magnet on it and find out, but, um, but again, I, I think it should be a painted galvanized or a painted aluminum, not just a cheap sheet metal.
Yeah, they just go up such that what the, you talk like the, they talk like aluminum was a better option with angle iron simply because it doesn't rust.
Whatever thickness that would be instead of that thing, I don't know how you do that tonight.
Well, we can add.
Because they're in violation right now.
We can add other specifications if we want to.
My request would be a minimum of a twenty-two gauge, which is a heavy roofing sheet metal that's commercially available, but it's not like a gutter metal. And Chris, you may know better than me on what gauge to recommend, but you know what, twenty-six is a very light gauge sheet metal, that's about the cheapest you can get for a roof.
Yeah, I would, it really just depends on the freezing, I mean, if they're three or four foot span, I don't know.
I just think more about durability, not flexing, but.
I think, I think probably a twenty-nine or twenty-eight gauge sheet metal would be sufficient. I think twenty-eight is for sure, that's kind of like the standard. Twenty-six is getting thicker, but usually homes or barn dominions or anything like that, they usually start at like twenty-eight gauge.
These are, these are thick, like heavy, heavy doors.
Those are closer to like a sixteen gauge, tell the Fuel Max.
Yeah, Fuel Max is really nice.
The, the one next door where the clay's at, it's, it looks nice when they put it in, but it's, it's the same stuff that the side of your building will be made, uh, that may be even thinner. And, and tore up after a while, open and close it twice a week, probably.
Yeah, that, that is our objective here, right, is to allow a durable gate to be put in, that's the whole purpose of.
Also, just coming here, we're talking about the full enclosure, not just the gate. So Fuel Max.
No, just, just the gate.
What this says is enclosure, I thought.
So Fuel Max, Fuel Max is a sixteen gauge sheet metal.
So Fuel Max, Fuel Max is a sixteen gauge sheet metal, welded to frame and painted.
Yeah, so that is a very durable one, and I would be very, very okay with that sixteen gauge.
And it wouldn't be a bad idea to make it thicker, we're talking about, you know, hundred-and-twenty-five square foot area, not three thousand, five thousand, you know, it's not like it's gonna break the budget by.
So do, do we wanna offer a range of like sixteen to twenty-two, or specify sixteen?
I would be okay with that. So again, this doesn't say the dumpster enclosure, so it's all four sides, right, on the cover sheet? City Council to review an exception for dumpster enclosure?
Yes, but if you read the, if you read the exception, it says-
The three sides, the normal fence.
One side of the dumpster storage area may be equipped with angle iron and vertically aligned corrugated aluminum infill lockable gate.
Okay.
So just one side, the, the other three sides have to match our ordinance.
So you got corrugated aluminum, and I would just possibly board galvanized, no?
Yeah, they've got eight inch CMU walls on each side.
Just the, the aluminum is gonna be more limited in your thickness, it's not gonna be as commercially available, the heavy gauge aluminum will be not as readily available.
Depends on, depending on the color, the reason is, if they get the same powder coated, they may not get it powder coated in brown. The color of the gate should be consistent with the color of fencing that matches, and that's, the problem is, is that, that's all, you know, you see people in red shirts, orange-
Yeah, I don't think we want, we don't want red gates, right, I think you need something that looks like a white fence.
Well, I, you know, if the coloring is, is consistent, I don't, I don't know, I just don't, don't sound like an HOA when you say, it's gotta be this color.
Well, I mean, it is an exception, right, so, so-
And on top of that, the city administrator has to sign off.
Yeah, that's, that's, that is-
So there's a little bit of aesthetic, and his opinion of the aesthetics.
Okay, so, we could, what we could do is scratch that fourth bullet item that says the gate must be brown color to say, the gate must be a minimal sixteen to twenty-two gauge thickness? Is that acceptable?
Minimum twenty-two gauge, and you take the colors- Sixteen gauge or thicker. Right, the lower the number, the thicker, so it's not sixteen or higher, or twenty-two or higher, twenty-two gauge or thicker.
Okay, I'll, I'll read it out here in a second. Okay, and then, to, to go back up to item one, we want to add galvanized metal in addition to aluminum, corrugated aluminum, we want to do corrugated galvanized metal.
Metal would include aluminum, right?
Don't give you galvanized aluminum.
Okay, so, so item one, party, be vertically aligned corrugated aluminum infill or galvanized metal lockable gate.
Do we have anything in our ordinance that tells them to have the maintain their fences satisfactory?
So just, just fence ordinance, yes.
Just after the first few months truck was in, they pay a year to repair it?
Yeah, that just, that would just be followed in kind of enforcement.
It's stuck, it, it's like, we're not at HOA, so we can't tell you, you can't have a pink fence, or a pink house, or whatever, we can't, we can't tell them they, I mean, unless we put it to ordinance, the way it is right now, the aesthetics of it is not so much an instruction, so we control how it, and then, but when it gets twenty years old, unless it's completely crumbled, we don't have it.
Just like residential fences, there's lots of them in various states.
Completely crumbled is a problem, you know, as long as it's still standing, it's hard to enforce.
Well, in other words, someone thirty days from now could tear the gate down, and we have, we don't have any-
Once it's on, and it's become a rubbish, then I have authority, but if they clean up the rubbish and-
I think the only authority we have is the dumpster can't be visible from the street, which is the way our ordinance is currently written, its trash cans can't be visible from the street or something.
I thought you were talking about fences in general.
No, I'm talking about this dumpster enclosure.
You're talking about the dumpster, yeah, the dumpster cannot be visible from the street, I mean, it has to be shielded, if you see it, the twenty or little three inch gap in the gate, you know, so you-
I, I have a concern that going around and leaving it open, I see so many are torn up and never repaired.
So if we look at item two, specifications, the third bullet item, it states the gate must be maintained in good condition, ensuring that it remains secure operational, any compliance with safety and security. So under, Maria, under section two, specifications, the first bullet item, it says vertically aligned corrugated aluminum material infill, right there, we want to add or galvanized metal that fully conceals. Hey, Council, any other discussion?
We're gonna get rid of color, because color brown is in two places, excuse me, for hard put on that.
Ah, is it, I took it out of the one place, where's?
It's in the third, it's in section one, and under in section two, down at the bottom bullet. Section one, the gate should be covered in color.
Bullet item one, the last sentence says gate should be brown in color, we'll remove that part out of it.
What do we put it in, suppose, natural earth tone color?
It just approval by the city administrator.
All right, so that, that's covered. Just to put a brown, it's okay. Just sitting here going by the lobs and lads.
Candy cane stripes, please.
Case, you don't have the Scots come upon.
All right, any other discussion?
It always round.
All right, so, anybody brave enough to make a motion on this? Councilman Davis?
I would like to make the motion that we approve the exception for the dumpster gates under Article Five, fences, as discussed and amended in council.
Motion on the floor, Councilman Davis, to approve the proposed update on Article Five, fences, section eight, dash one-one-two-K, general fence requirements with amendments as discussed. Do I have a second? Councilman Sanders, seconds, all in favor? Short of unanimous.
Was it about the gauge, sixteen to twenty-two inch gauge?
Sixteen to gauge or thicker. The fourth bullet item, the, the gate must be a minimum of sixteen gauge.
Sixteen gauge or twenty-two gauge?
Oh, sorry, twenty, twenty-two gauge or thicker. You clear on the minutes, if not, I've got one here, so. All right, moving on to item fifteen, review and approve the agreement between the city of Roman Forest and Thornberry Development Southern Oaks water system for development in phase two of section four. Who's speaking on this one?
I'll speak.
All right.
Um, Christopher? The contracts that came in, this came in, yes, sir?
Do you mind using the microphone for the listeners online?
The, the contracts that came in on the agreement between the city and with Thornberry Development came in really late, and so I talked to Mayor Bar earlier today, and when we talked about, we wanted to make sure that everything was in place before we had the agreement, so what Mayor Bar's asked is that we come back, maybe the week of May, I'm sorry, April seventh, eighth, ninth, or tenth, that week, and have a workshop with Ryan and his lawyer there, and our lawyer there, and sit down and look at it, and make sure that everything is in place, so that we all are agree on something, rather than rushing through something that just came in, is that enough? So we're tabling this tonight is what I ask you.
Council? I did get that request from Mayor Bar as well, to, to create a workshop.
So that is a workshop, not a town hall?
Correct.
Citizens can listen, not participate?
Correct.
Have we sent out notices to all the property owners in that section, other than the properties that Thornberry Development owns, so that they can listen to those discussions, because they are going to be impacted by our street assessment agreement with the developer? So, Ms. Dabla, who can attest to this, even though the city sent notices, we never sent certified letters, she says she never received them, yet she got a bill for the street assessment, I just wanna make sure that all the homeowners that are in that area, that are going to be assessed, evaluated for the new streets, that they are given the chance to understand how that's going to impact them, because they may not even know this is going on.
I believe that's nine, five dollars tomorrow?
There's eight, eight for electrical, and I think it was, yeah.
I'd just like to make sure we send out certified letters to those property owners, that they know there's a workshop where they can understand how they're going to be impacted.
Mr. Francis, this one, maybe I've known this, I don't know who has answered if we had to last time legally send out for these agreements, but I know once we got into the assessments with the dollar amounts and such, that for sure had to go out along a certified, but should be able to tell us if we have to do it again.
Again, they're not gonna get a chance to speak, I would just rather be upfront with them that this is coming, and then that way they can get involved if they choose to as things move forward. They're not going to get a chance to speak at the workshop, but they can certainly understand what's going on, and that something is coming.
At, at least my opinion, Councilman Davis, is that's a topic for the, for the-
For the workshop?
For, I'm sorry, for the work, for the workshop, yes, so, I think that's something-
Just, they're not even gonna know a workshop is coming, so they're not gonna have any idea.
Workshops don't really put residents, it's for us, right?
Want to show them, but it's for us.
We'll have a town hall at some point for the residents, right?
If that's the intent-
We will need to put a notice of the workshop meeting, and there would be, it would stop.
Right, but if they're not participating, right?
We've got, we've got to understand what's on the table before we communicate it out to the residents, right?
I'm just thinking, the cost of a certified letter is not that much for fifteen residents, to be on the front side of the curve, rather than, as Ms. Dabla had happen to her, right, getting a street assessment for thousands of dollars, and never knowing it was coming.
Understood, and I don't disagree with you, I just, I just think we-
That's just my opinion. So I'm fine with tabling it, the first motion is to table this discussion in order to set up a separate town hall meeting with the appropriate attorneys and appropriate partners.
Workshop, workshop.
Excuse me, workshop, not town hall.
So what we could do, we could just, we can have a motion to table this, and then item seventeen, for future agenda items, we will discuss adding the workshop, so-
Well, we'll need to do that before the next meeting, if we're talking about doing that April seventh, eighth, or ninth, it'll be before the next meeting.
That was Quinn. Mayor Bar asked, can we do that early?
So in two weeks.
In April, right, right, no, that's what I'm saying, item seventeen is where we, we talk about those, those type items.
Okay, so here, I'd like to make the motion to table this, and then item seventeen, we'll make the motion to create a town hall.
A motion on the floor from Councilman Davis, to table the agreement between the city of Roman Forest and Thornberry Development Southern Oaks water systems. Do I have a second? Senator, Councilman Reesley, all in favor? Short of unanimous. All right, item sixteen, vote on matters discussed in the closed executive session, I don't believe we have anything this month to do.
Yes.
Are we setting the date of the, of the next line?
Do that under item seventeen.
All right, line item seventeen, city council requests for future agenda items, so we do have a request for a workshop from Mayor Bar for the agreement with Thornberry Development Southern Oaks, and you sent around the-
If we look at that week of the seventh, eighth, ninth, or tenth, we'll usually do it every week, so seven or eight.
And assuming Mayor gave me those dates since he's available, from that time, he said those would be good dates for him, yes, sir? Council, how is your calendars look for?
The seventh and eighth, I'm busy, but I'm available.
Seventh is a Monday, eighth is a Tuesday, ninth is a Wednesday. Mr. Phelps, do you need to be in the meeting?
I'm good, those three days, I'm good to be there.
Your choice.
What's that?
I'm not favored of the seventh.
Seventh out?
I'm out, I'm out of the seventh. Available at night.
What's that? Uh, normally we do six P M. for workshops, so April the ninth, six P M.?
I'm good.
Good, Mr. Reesley? You good on April ninth?
I can do it, I need to check with my council, just to make sure he, Mayor Bar did ask that he table it all.
Okay.
He's looking like, trying to get answers.
Okay, so let's tentatively set the, the workshop for April the ninth at six P M.
You already have a meeting scheduled in City Hall for April the ninth.
Oh, do we? There's already a meeting here?
Yeah, April the ninth, we do our ham radio meeting, but let me change that, I mean, it's, that's not a big deal for us to change that for this.
Can you do that? That, that, I think I have help.
I'm the vice president, I can do it.
All right.
I, I will pass that, and we will find, that's the time for the post.
Okay, all right, thank you, Councilman Reesley. All right, any other requests for agenda?
We spoke earlier in this evening on ordinance, about ordinance on home repairs from storms, about time tables, that we're gonna try to create an ordinance of some sort, so we're gonna do that, we're just gonna stay for the six months if we discuss earlier?
I think we tabled that last year.
Yeah, so, so we did put, I, I put together an ordinance that, that addressed dilapidated houses, so we, yeah, I, I think probably what we need to do, rather, we can't discuss it right now, but I think what we, probably what we need to do is, is pull that back up, dust it off, maybe a couple of us, only two of us, take a look at it, and if, if you wanna do that, you and I can get together a bit, and we can, we can look at it and see what we'll need to do, and then we can bring it to a future meeting with that, once we have.
I'm going to submit some recommendations for our logging permit, that ordinance needs some changes, and so, and I don't recall the ordinance number meeting or logging right now, but I will be presenting that.
Okay, so you want an agenda item for next month to discuss logging, logging permit agenda, or, or, or this?
Mayor, I would like to make the request that for the next meeting, we have a copy of the county drainage ordinance to review if we want to adopt that in lieu of our ordinance for ditches, and then a separate, if we can get a copy of the county development regulations that Ms. Dabla spoke of, to understand if we want to incorporate pieces of that.
If, if there's links for those, that you could just email out, might-
Yeah, those-
Rather than print those documents?
This is the index of the document, and it's on the Texas, um, local department engineer, it's like a hundred and twenty-seven pages, but it's all explicit on the index, so you can go to the index, and as March four, they start using it, and it's mandatory for all homeowners, but- for all homeowners, but it is like us, they can do it, they can mandate us, only the city say, you know what, we're not following you, and they should have you, the engineer and all the work, that you need to follow those instructions.
If we could just, just send an email out?
Question, sir, Council, for the county regulations, we as an independent city are not required to follow those, correct? Or because we're in the county, do we have to abide by those?
Well, I guess it, it, not all of them are necessarily going, not every single thing would necessarily be subordinate, or the city would be subordinate to. As far as development regulation, I, I don't believe that you, that you are already subject to the kind of conditions that the city can, is able to designate their own construction regulations, street widths, things of those matters, but coming into compliance with it, certainly would make it easier, especially if we were wanting to have certain elements adhered to it, or there are certain elements that you can have cross outside the city limits, and then to just have it cross the county, but just maybe it wouldn't do that either.
Okay, Council, any other future agenda items? Anybody has? All right, so we just need a motion to adjourn?
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders, very quickly.
I'm bored.
Do I have a, to adjourn, do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Council Reeser, seconds. All in favor? Short of unanimous. Time is eight twenty-three.
You ready to leave, Mary?
I am out of town.